Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 6th, 2011, at 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets. Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember Warman.
Here.
Mayor, Councilmember DeStefano and Councilmember Lewis are excused.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 16th City Council Meeting, the August 23rd City Council Budget Workshop, and the August 30th City Council Workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll move that the minutes be approved.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you bring that with you?
I don't know.
Those opposed?
Motion carries without objection.
Next item on our agenda is a proclamation. I think I'll read this one. Chief and Sergeant, are you joining?
I guess nothing last night.
After you, no after you.
He just wanted to make sure Mike was in front of him.
Whereas September 11th, 2011, marks one full decade since the unprovoked and senseless acts of terrorism experienced by the American people at the World Trade Centers in New York City, and whereas we as a union continue to remember the unspeakable loss of so many innocent lives, Americans all across the world continue to keep their hearts, keep in their hearts the 2,974 Americans who were killed on September 11th, 2001, and whereas the threat of terrorism and terrifying violence has never overshadowed the resilience, spirit, and resolve of America's faith in democracy and unity, and whereas the heroism of the public safety and rescue workers, local officials, and volunteers who responded to the 9/11 tragedy with courage and selfless compassion will be remembered forever by all Americans. And whereas on this 10th anniversary of the terrorist attacks on the United States of America, we must never forget that we are now a world drawn together in a common cause of freedom and a renewed devotion to peace on earth. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2011 as 9/11 Remembrance Day and encourage all citizens to honor all victims of terrorism by reaffirming their commitment to sustaining a newfound patriotism through volunteerism, community involvement, and service in Palm Coast. Adopted the 6th day of September, 2011, it's my pleasure to sign it as mayor. Gentlemen? I'm sure you want to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On behalf of the men and women of the fire department and the law enforcement community, we invite everybody to come to the memorial service at Heroes Park at 8:30 on Sunday morning. I know there's another one at the Elks Club where they're dedicating Steel from the Towers. I believe that's at quarter to 10, 9:30, quarter to 10. And then there's a service being at the Government Services Building following that with the annual motorcycle ride by the Red Knight. So there's a full day. Local churches also have blue masses scheduled for the day. So there's a lot of memorial services for the day, and I hope the public can come out and join us, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you for all your service. Agenda item number three, resolution of nuisance abatement final assessment. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is going to be an annual resolution. Few months ago, actually it was last year, you adopted an ordinance that allowed us to not just put liens on property when the city had to use tax dollars to abate nuisance on property, but to put a tax assessment on the property. There's a legal process you have to go through to actually assess that tax on just those properties that owe the city money because we worked on their property to bring it into compliance. This is a resolution that actually accomplishes that goal. It is a super lien, if you will, versus just a lien that is second to mortgages. This is supersede of mortgages really what the goal is, so the taxpayers get paid back. That's all we have, it's ready for your final action.
Council questions. Mr. Meeker.
Just one, and probably a legal question, so I'll give it to Mr. Reichman, but I thought that there was some discussions out there that super liens weren't actually going to fly in the courts, that there wasn't going to be a mechanism to, you know, vault our lien over others. Did that not happen, or?
It did happen, but it happened with regard to code enforcement liens. There was a case that came out of the Fifth District Court of Appeals involving the city of Palm Bay. In that situation, there was a code enforcement lien, and it ran into a battle with a mortgage that was prior in time. The city of Palm Bay had adopted a legislation, an ordinance, which, if you will, vaulted its code enforcement liens superior over pre-recorded, earlier recorded mortgages. And the Fifth District Court of Appeals said, no, that violates the Florida statutes which codifies the old common law rule that from standpoint of priority of liens, first in time, first and right, and so they held that a local government outstanding home rule did not have the power to impair that type of contractual relationship involving lenders. However, that was limited to codes, excuse me, to liens that were created by Chapter 162 and some utility liens. This is a different process. That's one of the reasons, that's the purpose of this, is to create liens which are based upon a statutory provision that deals with taxes. So we, for the assessments and the liens that are created for these assessments, we stand in the same stead as ad liborem real property taxes and are collectible on the tax bill. If it's not paid, like someone would not pay their taxes, their ad liborem assessments, then would go through the same process for certificates of sale and certificates of title through the tax process under 197.
Good. All right, thank you. That's, in fact, once you said Palm Bay.
That's the case. And that case is, that case actually is being appealed to the Florida Supreme Court. There are many cities that are getting involved. There's an amicus brief that has been filed by various cities, including the city of Palm Coast, to try to make sure that the Florida Supreme Court is aware of the impact of the decision reached by the Fifth District Court of Appeals, and to make sure that there is clear guidance in the future throughout the state of Florida, so that there's not conflict between the different district courts.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Three? Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Our motion to approve the agenda item.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the consent agenda, items four, five, six, seven, and eight. Would anyone like to remove something from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove Agenda Item Four.
Number Four.
Mayor, I'm also been asked to go over the background of Agenda Item Five, so I'd be happy to do that if you want to hear.
Okay, so that leaves us six, seven, and eight.
Motion to approve the consent order of the items remaining for six, seven, and eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda Item Number Four, Mr. Meeker.
The reason I wanted to pull this is because I find this to be a very interesting and important improvement to water treatment plant number two, and because of the ultimate cost, I seem to remember about six and a half million dollars for the whole deal, and the improvements that we get out of it in recovering water from basically an alternative form of water, I wanted a little bit of discussion out here in front of the public, so they can see exactly what the utility company does on their behalf without it sliding immediately through on the consent agenda. So what I was hoping is that the staff could do just a brief summary of what's going on here and what the total benefit is, particularly in the amount of water that you're going to recover, that I'm going to see that we try to get our allocation increased at some point in time using some of that water, but anyway.
Yeah, Richard's come prepared to do a briefing on this item, so Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to turn it over to Richard.
Thank you. First of all, it's, Water Treatment Plant Number Two is a membrane softening facility. That's a low-pressure reverse osmosis system that takes groundwater, basically filters it, and it discharges what we call a concentrate, and that's a concentration of the minerals that we have removed from the groundwater, and that concentrate currently is permitted to be discharged in the Royal Palms waterway. Has been going to Royal Palms waterway since the plant was constructed in the mid-'90s, and that was permitted when the original plant was constructed, utilizing a method called extended mixing zone for the background testing to make sure that the water is okay to put into the canal. And the water quality actually is better water than the receiving stream. However, the, more recently, the Environmental Protection Agency has determined that the DEP's method of permitting is not consistent with the Clean Water Act, and the DEP notified us that it was, it would be mandatory for us to take that discharge and do something else with it. We did a study, looked at a lot of different alternatives, and did some cost-benefit analysis, and the alternative that we came up as being the most feasible is to take that concentrate and further treat it through a process that's going to be in essence similar to Water Treatment Plant Number One, and that's a lime softening and filtration process, only instead of using a multimedia filter, we're going to use a membrane filter. So bottom line is, what we hope to do is further treat the concentrate, and we will return additional drinking water from that, what formerly was a waste stream, and the only byproduct will be a lime sludge. It's an unregulated substance that currently at Water Plant One, we have lime sludge, and we send that out, and a contractor mixes it with shell and uses it for road base. So that will be the end product, the byproduct of this process, but more importantly, in the initial construction, the plant will return about 800,000 gallons a day of drinking water that currently is going into Royal Palms waterway. And the plant's ultimate capacity will be twice that. When Water Treatment Plant Number Two is expanded, we'll also be able to treat more concentrate and deliver twice the amount that the initial capacity will. So what Mr. Meeker was referring to is that means 800,000 gallons a day, we don't have to remove from the ground, we'll be able to use that for drinking water for our future, to cover some future growth in more residents or businesses or whatever.
Richard or Frank, since that is water that is currently being discharged, does that can, would that be considered an alternative water supply source?
I believe it would.
And therefore?
And therefore, would be very favorably looked at, you know, as a, we've been encouraged to go to alternative forms of water. Here's a perfect example of the city taking a leading role in doing so, and it might be that that increase in allocation could be done as easy as a letter modification to the existing permit.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item, Agenda Item Number Four? Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Our motion to approve the item.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda Item Number Five, Mr. Landon, you remove this one.
Well, this is actually a very positive finale to something we've been working on for some time. We have a local industry, contemporary machinery and engineering services. They are one of our local industries on Roberts Road that manufactures high-tech machinery that actually is the lathe that makes railroad wheels, if you can imagine what size lathe that is, and so it's a, has to be very precise, and that's where they make them, right here, and actually just outside Palm Coast and Flagler County. They currently have about 25 employees. I believe they're up already from that number, and they're growing, but their old plant, which they're keeping, but it's on septic, it is on city water, and they needed more space, so they were proposing an expansion project, and they wanted to look at the option of actually getting city sewer in addition to city water, and we were able to work in agreement with them. A few months ago, City Council heard that, and you all were very, very supportive. In the meantime, there was some title issues that had to get worked out, and the owners have got those worked out, so now it's time to finalize the agreement. That agreement is basically an incentive agreement where the company agrees to expand. It's about a 40,000 square foot addition onto their building, 30 additional jobs, they're good-paying jobs, going to be over $46,000 a year paying jobs. They also have agreed to connect both facilities right now, the new one, and eventually the existing facility to city sewer, and they also agreed to abide by our condition of an annexation agreement that when they are contiguous, they would come into the city. In return, what we have offered them is to extend the public line to their facility. They have already done the private part, the private lift station, but will extend the public line, and also we would be responsible for any of the connection impact fees. So we are not actually granting them any incentive dollars, we're just helping get infrastructure to them, makes their business more efficient, and also has that benefit of not having a sewer system, a septic system, out there from an environmental standpoint. So we believe this is a, just a win-win, a positive. It's not one of those where there's really any cash going out other than the extension of our sewer line. So that is what the agreement's about, once again. It is ready now for execution now that they finally have the title cleared up. Just kind of the overview, Mayor.
30 new good-paying jobs?
Yes.
Any council question? Mr. Meeker.
Just real quick, Jim, I think it's a fair agreement. Has there been any discussions or concerns about a co-mingling of hazardous products from the machining process into the sewer system, or do they have, you know, separate parts, washers, and everything is recycled onsite?
Well, when they get connected to us, they're required to get a city permit, and so all those things are looked at with their operation.
I was wondering if Brian may have, Brian's typically my expert on that kind of stuff.
Right. Brian, would you like to answer that question?
Maybe not.
He looks surprised, so.
My question, Brian, is, is there any concern out of their machining process that we might have a co-mingling of hazardous materials, liquid products, whatever, that are spent and used, and end up going down the drain into the sewer system, or do you know anything about their operations? Do they, most places, it's all separate and handled, recycled?
Exactly. They're going to want to have a pretreatment system within the confines if, in fact, there are any of those materials that could find their way into the waste system, which they're not allowed to dispose of, and then recover and recycle them for their own beneficial use.
Right, because we have a zero, my recollection is we have a zero discharge tolerance, or zero tolerance, I should say, for discharge.
No, and they'll be fully inspected prior to coming online.
Okay. Any show of council questions? Anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Five? Good evening, Mr. Rawls.
Good evening, Mayor Nets. Greg Rawls, Enterprise Flagler. Good evening, council members. I started working on this project about two and a half years ago, and this is a very project we should be proud of. Mr. Smith has been in our community for over 20 years, and for 20 years, he's talked about doing the expansion. But under the right nurturing and nudging and collaborative spirit between city and county, we convinced him this was the time to do it. So not only has he, like I said, he's doubled his plan expansion, about a million and a half, $2 million facility, he's about to do about a million dollars worth of tools, new tooling and machinery. He's already increased his employment by 50 percent, he's roughed out about 35 jobs right now. He does plan on doing about 55, more than doubling at the end of the incentive agreement. Well, you know, what's surprising is that this project alone, it's shocking, kind of, is that this project alone increases our improved industrial tax base by 3 percent. I don't know if that's shocking that this project does that, or is that shocking that our tax base, industrial, improved industrial tax base is so low. And another thing that should be pointed out about this project is that it's going, he's going to more than double his tax liability for our city and county. And you've got to ask yourself, what additional services is he getting from our government partners? I really can't articulate any. So I think this is one of the projects that substantiates the theory that every dollar a residential taxpayer pays gets a dollar twenty in service, for every dollar an industrial user pays gets about 30 cents. So I just want to make you all, it's something we should be very proud of, and that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your participation. Two and a half years later, we got it done. Anyone else wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Five? Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that project more than be approved.
And I'll second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. That brings us to the end of the consent agenda and the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda? Please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Charlie Erksen, Palm Coast. I guess I missed the workshop, and I, so I didn't hear the conversation about a question I had raised about the city hall, but I want to raise another one, and I'm quoting the June 13th and June 20th week in progress reports that the scope and fee proposal with architectural team has been finalized with public validation services identified and at no cost to the city. A construction management firm was selected, the scope and fee to be drafted for review. I'd like someone to comment on a firm in Jacksonville, W.G. Mills Gilbain, and a $360,000 contract that I understand is pending with them as the construction management team. I'd also like a comment or two with regard to their proposing a job fair here in Palm Coast, and that having been turned down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Between Pritchett and Whiteview Parkway on Beltier in the center, it's looking good, and thank you. I know you don't get those kind of compliments too often, but I give them when I see it, and it's, it's picking up. It really is picking up there, and I know you're going further down, and I'm sure folks like me that live at that end of Palm Coast appreciate it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Yeah, we're inching our way toward State Road 100. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing nobody approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council, but first, Mr. Landon, can you shed some light on the construction management firm, the proposed contract, and this is the first time I've heard about a job fair that they proposed?
Let's start with the job fair. I have not heard anything about a job fair, so can't confirm or get shining light on that rumor. It's the first time I've heard of a proposed job fair. The other one, sure, you know, once again, we go back to the background. When I went out into the community and we talked about the options of city hall, the option of continuing to rent at almost a quarter million dollars a year versus owning a facility, building a facility, got a lot of pushback that now's not the time because of the economy, and even if it makes good financial sense long-term, people made, you know, kept making the statement loud and clear that now's not the time to be spending dollars on a new city hall. But before the decision to put the project on hold, City Council got a lot of questions about details. Got those questions when we went out to the community. Okay, exactly how much is it going to cost? What is some of the operating cost going to be? What are a lot of those long-term questions? We didn't have that information, and so what we started the process is saying, okay, well let's see if we can't find some experts that can give us that information to provide to the community, so that we aren't just saying we don't know. Then, as we went through that, it became, the voices became louder and louder, I guess as far as concerned about now's not the time to build the city hall, so the city council said, no, we are going to put this project on hold at this time. So any of those things about proposed contracts, or, you know, we started that process, not signed any contract, there is no effort going towards that project whatsoever this time.
Thank you. And you know nothing about the job fair?
Don't know anything about job fair.
Harrison, if you can give us your source on that after the meeting, I'd be happy to look into it. City Council, discussion of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Warman.
Yes, sir. I received an email from an individual referencing the waste management containers. When we did the test for waste management for the containers with the automated pickup with the trucks in the B section, when that ended, they were supposed to pick up the containers, and this issue involves, many people have retained those containers, and they seem to be large and awkward to handle by Waste Pro. And do you know anything about it? Can Waste Management come and pick those up, or should they, or what's the issue?
First of all, there's Waste Management and there's Waste Pro. I believe the experiment we did, that kind of trial period, was Waste Pro.
Waste Management is on.
Was Waste Management?
Waste Management is on the container.
Okay, all right. Obviously.
The question is, how do you throw out a garbage can?
Oh, should Waste Management?
Put it in a bigger can, yeah. Yeah. I think that the key to it is, is that if somebody wants it to be removed, give us a call, give my office a call, send us an email, and we'll make arrangements to have it picked up, is probably the best answer. I don't want to just, it's another thing, if someone's had it for probably five years now, and then you went and just picked it up, we'd probably get a call saying, someone stole my trash can, so, but if someone does want it to go away, we can make that happen.
Don't we have a single-source call-in where, where it goes into one of their reps and it's put on notice for them to handle?
Yes, but this would be a little unusual situation. Call my aunt, and Diane is who's in charge of it, was sitting back there, and she'll get transferred to Diane, and Diane will handle it, but if they try to go through the automated system, that, to say, oh, come pick up this trash can, that.
There's not a push-button for picking up an empty trash can?
Usually not.
And probably what we'd want to do is, if there are a number of residents who want to get rid of them, try to arrange so that they can be picked up, stack one inside the other, and let them pick up at the same time.
Yeah, we'll be happy, just let us know if there's a group of them, we'll do a group arrangement.
That's it? Mr. Meeker.
Nothing from me.
And I have nothing. Discussion by city attorney, matters not on the agenda.
Why ruin a good thing?
Why ruin a good thing? I have nothing.
Discussion by city manager, matters not on the agenda.
Does that mean I'm going to ruin a good thing? Set me up. Okay.
The shoe fits.
Yeah. Well, I have a couple of things. One of them is yesterday, the, actually, two days ago, the little event we had at Central Park celebrating Labor Day and the fireworks and our partnership with the Rotary. This was in lieu of the Fourth of July celebration, and I was expecting a small crowd because it's not that common to have a Labor Day celebration out in the park. And we had a great turnout, and I've heard nothing but positive things, and it's worked out, it worked out very, very well. I'm very impressed with the Rotary and the city and everybody else that helped put this together. Also, nice to announce that the lighting around the walkway around Central Park and the lake was completed recently, so we have the lighting. The sound system has been improved, and most importantly, the electrical system may not be totally finished, but if it's not, it's very close. So now, when people have special events out there, we don't have to tell them, no, you can't plug in because you're going to blow the breaker box. So those improvements, which are paid by the CRA, Community Redevelopment Area, and not the general tax dollars, are wrapping up so that these events have those kind of facilities that make it even safer and easier to use.
Before you get to your second item, you just reminded me of something, so I'm going to take privilege and jump back in.
What?
I had a phone call this morning from a resident who attended the fireworks, loved it, wonderful evening, wonderful event, couldn't find her way home. Drove around and around and around and around and around and around, couldn't find State Road 100. Her suggestion was, perhaps when we have a special event, especially an evening, a directional sign this way out.
An electronic sign?
No.
We do have little, we do have little event signs. Okay.
Just just a thought.
Yeah. And also, when we have visitors, some of these, you know, that it's amazing how people head for Palm Coast Parkway to get onto 95 to head south because they don't, they don't know the community.
We do have portable, yeah.
Yeah, we have a little.
Informational signs.
We have a little, the little kind of teepee or sandwich board type signs we could put out.
Just a suggestion from a resident.
Okay. My other issue is the swimming pool and closing it for the winter. I think it's, I heard so many rumors out there, and there's misinformation, I thought I would update city council where we are and then hopefully avoid some swimmers who have high annexation right now, of anxiety right now, excuse me, of not having a swimming pool available during the winter. The idea is that we actually have two public pools, the Belt Air Swim and Racquet Club, and then Frida Zamba. Belt Air is owned and operated by the school district, Frida Zamba, the city facility. And during the summer, there, we have very high use, but most people don't swim during the winter. And so both of us have low attendance, except we do have swim teams. We have some recognized swim teams, the Sinkerbells, which is nationally, if not internationally, recognized. We have some adult teams, kind of organized swimmers that use it. And so the idea is, instead of heating two pools, actually trying to be more efficient and have them all use one pool. And so that's what we're working towards. It's not working towards, I heard a rumor, oh, we were going to have one group that was going to actually.
Favor one.
Yeah. Bump out another existing group, et cetera. None of that makes any sense. We'd be a lot cheaper because just the propane bill itself, last year, we paid $30,000 to heat our pool. That was one pool. Plus in the lifeguards who are out there in their parks watching the steam come off the water, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, but when you do have the swim teams and you have those groups that are year-round swimmers providing that, we'd be a lot better off extending the hours, trying to schedule it so that everybody could use the one pool, and confident we can do that, and then save the dollars at the other. Cheaper to do an hour or two longer schedule, have it, a pool be heated just so that a couple hours during the day, it's available for these people. I don't think it's consistent with our whole active lifestyle and trying to promote new sports and adult sports to not make a pool available, but I think we're just trying to do it more efficient and going to work with the school district to do that. So trying to squash some of the rumors that we're just going to shut it down and not have a place for people to swim. And that's what, when we propose this, that's what city council asked us to do, is, all right, but work out something with the school district. Had good conversation. Just so you know, you know, they're looking at their winter schedule. So we said, okay, finalize your winter schedule, let us know what it is, and then we'll see how the groups that usually use Frida Zamba can fit in. So not displacing, but trying to fit into the other spots that might be available. The Belt Air pool is smaller, so it has some challenges there, but that's where we're headed, and that's what we're trying to do. Hopefully, can bring back to city council a success story that allows everybody to swim at a reduced cost to taxpayers. Mayor, that's all I had for the evening.
Mr. Meeker.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm motion to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance and participation. I think we.